Call to order this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We have all members present and our student representative declare quorum. If you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence led by board member Linda Murray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We'll have approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion?
Shall I move?
Thank you. Mr. Stauffer, is there a second? Second. Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any discussion?
Madam President.
I'd like to amend the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. How would you like to amend the agenda?
Motion to amend the agenda to include under reports to the board as the second item, a report from the board liaison to the Washington County Education Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second to Mr. Bickford's amendment?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, the vote is on Mr. Bickford's amendment to add a report from the board's liaison to the Washington County Public Schools Ed Foundation. All those in favor? Okay, we're unanimous. Student member concurs. Back to the main motion with as amended with Mr. Bickford's amendment. Any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda as amended? Okay, we're unanimous and the student member concurs. Approval of the minutes?
I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, September the 4th, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please raise your hand. Okay, we're unanimous.
I also move for the approval of the business minutes dated the same day, Tuesday, September the 4th, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any additions or corrections to the business meeting minutes? All those in favor? All right, unanimous and the student member concurs. Our next agenda item is public comment. We have no one who has signed up in advance. Is there anyone out there who would like to come forward to address the board during public comment? This would be the time to do so. Okay. We'll move on to all business. Our first item under consideration is the second reading of proposed policy JLIG entitled "Student Sunscreen Use." Mr. Trotta.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
On September 4th, the Board of Education approved the first reading of policy JLIG. Since the first reading, the community has been provided with an opportunity to offer comments. We have not received any comments. The Policy Committee is requesting that the Board of Education approve the second reading of this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move for the approval of the second reading of proposed policy JLIG entitled "Student Sunscreen Use."
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Any discussion? Mrs. Fisher, would you like to speak to the motion?
This was a requirement from the state of Maryland to create this policy. And evidently, there were varying rules across the state about this sunscreen use. And we want everybody to be on the same page. Obviously, sunscreen is a protective safety item for students. Our students are often out in the sun, whether it's for phys ed or a field trip, even band practice sometimes. So, we have a new policy.
Well, we will have soon.
Or we will soon, right.
Further discussion or questions for Mr. Trotta? If not, we'll move to the vote. The motion is for approval of the second reading of proposed policy JLIG entitled "Student Sunscreen Use." All those in favor? Okay, we're unanimous and the student member concurs.
Thank you.
Then we move on to new business. Our first item of new business is our consent agenda. Mr. Bechtel, good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, I have three items for review. These items were reviewed by our purchasing review committee and are being recommended for approval. And staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards renewals and procurements for Adobe Suite licenses. Renewal to Digital Information Systems at a cost of $50,481.25. Snow removal renewal to Advantage Landscape and Construction Inc., Man Construction Inc., Smithsburg Rental Service, and East Coast Landscaping and Excavating at the amounts listed on the summary of renewal. And commissioning agent for Sharpsburg Elementary School to Kibart Inc. at a cost of $58,415.
Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Questions for Mr. Bechtel or any discussion? Mr. Stauffer?
I should have asked this ahead of time, but what's it mean when it says we terminated the contract with Oak for Convenience? What does that mean?
So, we decided it was no fault of their own, of theirs. We just decided to move away from the CM to a GC contract. It was a decision made by staff, Mr. Rollins' group, and Mr. Prue.
Just for the sake of the public, CM means?
Construction manager, I'm sorry. And general contract, yeah, GC. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
If I can interject quickly, the decision was made to terminate that contract for convenience, not due to any performance issues with Oak Consulting, but more along the lines that we felt we could bring the project, the Sharpsburg project, into the board and into the constituents at a lower price under a general contract rather than a contract management contract. So, we did it as a cost-saving measure for the project.
Typically, we use one or the other. Why this time was general contractor more beneficial than a CM? Rob? Hang on. Sorry.
In this case, we really wanted to use a CM. That's why we went that way in the beginning, because of the existing building being on site and some of the coordination issues. As we worked through the design and everything, we realized the project was tracking over budget. And so, this is a value engineering thing. We just, we're going to take up the slack and do the work ourselves instead of having that consultant on-site. We think it would run smoother with them, but we couldn't afford them. So, we made that decision. Strictly ad hoc.
Do we take into consideration, I mean, you guys, the man-hours that our staff is going to be using to do this? I mean, how does that, if you put the two together, is it still cost efficient? Well, I understand you get it done, Rob. I mean, I have no doubt in my mind you'll get it finished because I trust you guys. You've built how many schools since you've been here? Just curious, you know, is that considered, is that taken into consideration? We say we're going to save money. Yes, we may save money, but you guys are going to be working X number of hours on this where you might be working on something else at the same, you know, at a different. You understand where I'm coming from? Put your value together with the cost.
Well, one of the things we've done is we've added staff recently, which should help with some of the smaller projects. So, we won't be stretched quite as thin. And with that, we think we can do it and at a lower cost still, even with that additional staff.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move to the vote. The motion is approval of tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor? All right, we're unanimous and the student member concurs. Thank you, Mr. Bechtel.
Thank you.
Next item under consideration is state and local FY 2020 capital improvement program plan with Mr. Prue, Mr. Rollins.
Good evening. Tonight, we'll be presenting to you the capital improvement program for FY 2020. As you know, this is a companion document to the Educational Facilities Master Plan with which you approved in June. Further, that document was shared with the county commissioners at a recent joint meeting. So, we'll, I'll walk you through some of the overarching goals of the program. Mr. Rollins will then walk you through the details and we'll close up with some of the budget discussion related to the capital improvement plan. So, the goal is, as you know, is to develop a fiscally responsible, prioritized, long-range plan. We're looking at addressing our renovation and modernization needs, identifying and resolving seat capacity issues we may have in various areas of the county, addressing our systemic maintenance needs, minimizing the local costs through strategic state funding requests. So, again, really working on a point-by-point basis, what funding is available at the state level, what are the prevailing trends at the state level, so we can maximize those costs to reduce our local expenditures and hopefully reducing our building replacement cycle and our operational costs long-term. Again, the document aligns with the Educational Facilities Master Plan that you recently approved. This CIP also reflects the change in the state funding of eligible construction from $302 a square foot to $318 a square foot as approved by the state. So, you can see those dollars here. So, if you're comparing, let's say, one of the out-years where we've got, let's say, an FY 21, you've got the same project, let's say, as you had last year, and you're wondering why are the dollars more this year? Because there's a natural increase in costs and you're always reflecting the change at the state level of the eligible construction. Again, we also assume we have the 71% state public school construction program funding. That's our eligible percentage at the state level. So, 29% of eligible construction is matched with local dollars. And of course, the plan also follows the instructions on submission to the public school construction program. And Rob will walk you through the details.
Okay, in FY 20, in accordance with the EFMP, it's just stated, we have four projects we're going to be requesting funding for. One is the downtown project, the urban educational campus. It's $4.7 million. This is our third CIP request. The first request was for local funding, the $4 million. The second request was from the state in the past fiscal year, which we got $5.53 million. And then this year, the $4.7. We expect to complete in the spring of 2020 on that project. Next project, the Sharpsburg Elementary School, total of $12.5 million would be in the request. $6.5 of that would come from the state. It's the, would be the second request of state funding. We received some this year for that project. And then a request of $6 million from the local CIP. Total project cost remains at $26.728. And you can see the funding to date. We have two systemic projects. One is Boonsboro Elementary School's roof. These are the same two systemic projects we requested last year but did not receive funding for. So, we just pushed them out one year. Boonsboro Elementary is a $1.5 million project. It doesn't reflect, it does reflect an increase in cost over the previous year. Materials and costs go up as you push projects out in time. So, the $1.5 is a split of $1,022,000 from the state and $552,000 in local dollars. Finally, in 2020, we're asking for South Hagerstown High School, Phase 2 of that roof. That cost too, also went up. It's $2.18 million, $1.4 from the state, $719,000 out of local dollars. So, in summary, for 2020, we have those four projects. It would be, represents a $13.7 million request from the state and a $7.3 million request in local dollars in total. These all represent our needs, you know, whether we get those funding, that funding or not from the state and local sources will remain to be seen, but these are our needs, these and why we're requesting them. Quickly, I'll go through the out-years. FY 21, we have another, the final request for Sharpsburg Elementary School. And we have our first funding request for the prototype school number one, which would be the Hickory-Fountain Rock combination that we talked about when we did our EFMP. We have three systemic projects that would total the 5.1 and 2.9, state and local funding. So, you can see the totals there. In '22, we'd have our second installment of funding for the school number one prototype. And we would have five systemic projects we'd be looking for money for. In FY '23, be the third installment on school number one and the first installment on prototype school number two and three systemic projects. In FY '24, it would be the fourth installment of the school number one, the second for school number two, and three systemic projects. And finally, in FY '25, we had our fifth and final installment of funding for school number one, third for school number two, and our first request for school number three. So, it's a little unorthodox from what we've done in the past, spreading the funding for these prototype schools over a five-year period. That's to hopefully spread the cost out so that it's more affordable from both the state and local sources based on what we've gotten in the past.
So, in total, in this closing slide, you have our total CIP funding requests through the years 2020 and 2025. The grand total through those years is $151 million. And again, to reinforce what Mr. Rollins has just stated to you, staff is presenting to you what we believe are the needs of the system to ask your approval to push those forward to the funding authorities at both the state and the local level. And then we will partner with you in advocating for those funds for really the buildings that we have. You know what our aging infrastructure is, and it is time to begin on working on, really, on some of those replacements and to not forget about the systemic maintenance projects that need to be done as well. Our systems, you know, when the buildings are 40 and 50 years old and 60 years old in some cases, that also means the systems are sometimes on the second replacement with some of those systems, and those need to be addressed as well. So, we appreciate your consideration of this request. And it is, your approval tonight will provide approval to both the state and the local authorities.
Thank you, gentlemen. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mrs. Williams, I have. I move to approve the state and local fiscal 2020 capital improvement program, CIP plan.
But is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Do we have any questions for Mr. Prue or Mr. Rollins? Mrs. Fisher?
You're laughing, Mr. Rollins.
If you go back to, I think it's slide five, has to do with the Boonsboro Elementary School roof replacement?
Yes.
You mentioned that this was last year's, one of our projects for last year. We did not get the funding. Would you explain what happened with the funding situation?
The state funding that we received was for the UIP and for the Sharpsburg, and that was the max that they would give. The state did not fund those projects. So, we had no other funding source in order to do those projects at that time.
Thank you. Mr. Ridenhour?
Yeah, very quickly. Starting with the urban campus. I wasn't there. I haven't been past it this week. So, I don't know, when's the wall coming down? When will the rest of it be? When will that be completed?
Right. So, they're working on the third floor of the demolition. They've dropped the top two floors already. I think, and it's slow work because they have to basically hand-pick it, especially with the adjacent work going on. So, they can't just roll a bulldozer in and take it down. The whole two-story section that was to the rear is gone.
Yeah.
And the top two floors of the taller structure up against South Potomac are gone. They anticipate finishing probably in the third week in October. As soon as they get the floor they're working on down, they're going to be able to bring a machine in because everything's a little bit lower to the ground. They don't have to worry about the things flying to and fro as much. So, they can do a more controlled demolition once it's lower.
The other part, and you kind of answered it, does the fact that the Maryland Theater is doing their work, does that impact us other than, you know, it would be easier if they weren't doing it, we might knock it down quicker? Is there any impact there?
I think everybody's working really well together so far. I was just at a progress meeting today with Bowman, and they've, they have no complaints with working side-by-side with the theater. So, I think it's all fine.
The other thing, the, looking at the replacement schools, I'm sorry. The, have we or will we, when will we start working with the county or any other entity to try to find land that would fit and be appropriate for that school? I mean, we're going to have to have land to build a school.
Yes.
Which is unusual, I mean, recently, we haven't had that problem with replacements at that on-site.
As soon as possible. We really need a signal from the county that they support the...
The concept.
The concept. And once that happens, we would start working closely with them.
And it is worth noting as well that, you know, the plan is for the first school to be on this site here that we're, here on Downsville Pike. That school structure that is the Fountain Rock...
Are we certain that's the best place for it? I mean, we'll talk about it later, but I'm just curious if...
It's a site that provides public utilities. We have acreage here. So, it does also save in project costs. So, it's an option, but there may be others as well.
One thing we do lose in that is the chance of a walking community, obviously, you know, like Westfield Development there with Rockland. It's going to turn out to be the perfect school eventually as far as a walking community as the houses are starting to surround Rockland Woods Elementary. So, we would lose that opportunity. So, I think we would explore all options if, because there is some development even locally here that would be something to consider, but we also want to look at our timeline if the county commissioners are interested in supporting the project. You can also see it's a pretty aggressive ask of the state over the next five years. So, we'd have to see how the state formula works out with CIP funding as well. Yeah, I was thinking, I think originally, we thought about the possibility of replacing Hicks at some point, which is getting significantly older. And this might have been a better, I mean, with how much land we have here, might have been something that that could be used for, but...
A middle school with the playfields they need might be tight on this site.
Yeah. Well, the terrain is a little tough.
Right.
Okay, good. Good stuff. Thanks.
Mr. Rollins, I see we did look at this whole site, even if we did do it, it might mean our access road might come closer to the building. The site might cross, be like where our entrance road is, maybe that's the school right on top of the entrance road. It could be a variety of things. It wouldn't necessarily just be in the largest open spot that's here. We might reroute our own traffic to kind of keep from mixing the school and our traffic.
We'll replace, which ones? Fountain Rock and?
And Hickory.
And Hickory. Okay.
So, any other issue of Fountain Rock's resolved, open school, Fountain Rock and Hickory resolved, efficiency of the school. I did want to make one comment, Mr. Ridenhour. I was down at South Potomac Street today for Barbara Ingram meeting. They literally are taking the building down brick by brick. I stood there and watched for a few minutes, one brick at a time, coming off and, you know, knocking it loose and putting it in the big row of trash cans that goes down to the street. So, when you hear brick by brick, that is exactly how this building's coming down.
I was just, not to complain about Maryland Theater, but I was just curious as to, you know, when you've got two construction projects of this magnitude working side-by-side, you wonder, okay, is one hindering the other and vice versa? So, you answered it. I'm fine. Don't waste any more time, okay?
Mr. Roll, I'm sorry, Mr. Stauffer?
It's more likely we'll get money from the state. I mean, that's pretty well not guaranteed, but it's more likely that we won't have any hitches getting their money. What happens, though, if down the road, the county says, "We don't have $2, $3 million to give you this FY year"? I mean, given the history, we have trouble sometimes getting money for the general fund. So, what's our contingency if that were to occur?
There really isn't a contingency. These projects count on getting local support. There's, the locals have to at least pony up the 29% construction costs and the design costs and things. Now, you know, the state is reviewing what eligible costs are going to be. I've heard rumors that the state might help pay for architects and furnishings and equipment, but none of that's been enacted or is even seriously close to being enacted. Those things could happen down the road and may ease the pain a little bit from the local side. However, if the state's paying for that stuff, there's probably less projects being approved by the state if they're working from the same pool of money, if they're having to put more money in each project. So, there's pluses and minuses to all those things. But the bottom line is, the local government, if we don't have their support, we don't have projects.
I think, Mr. Stauffer, is one of the items you may have followed perhaps through the last legislative session is there may also be a movement of the state to not fund systemics out of the public school construction program, which makes that solely a local cost that we'll have to work with county staff on as well.
Good luck.
Any other questions? Further discussion? Mr. Ridenhour? Okay, so the vote is on, Mr. Bickford's motion to approve the state and local FY 2020 capital improvement plan. All those in favor? Okay, we're unanimous and the student member concurs. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next item under consideration is FY 2020's general fund operating budget calendar. Mr. Prue?
Not getting rid of me that soon. So, this evening, we have the proposed calendar budget, budget calendar for FY 2020 to present in front of you. I do want to highlight a few key dates that I think the board and the community may want to be aware of. Staff is currently beginning some discussions on what impacts we may have on this year's budget. And we'll be working through probably the time period of, let's say, between Halloween and Thanksgiving earnestly to pull a budget together, the superintendent's draft budget to present at a work session on December 18th of this year, December 18 of '18. We will probably have state aid calculations in mid-January to be able to provide a preliminary funding request to the county administrator and the county CFO on or around January 25 of 2019. We will be looking for a draft budget or an adoption of the board's draft budget for public hearing on February 5th, with then that public hearing taking place on the budget on March 5 of 2019. Following up, that is a joint meeting with the board of county commissioners on March 19th to discuss the board of ed's funding request of the locals and then an approval from the board at their evening meeting that night also on March 19th. So, those are some of the key dates for, benchmarks for board members and also for members of the community. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions. And I believe Mr. Brandonberg is here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the proposed FY 2020 budget calendar as a general guideline for development of the fiscal 2020 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Questions for Mr. Prue or any discussion of the budget calendar, proposed budget calendar? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the vote. The motion is for approval of the proposed FY 2020 budget calendar as a general guideline for development of the fiscal 2020 budget. All those in favor? Okay, we're unanimous and the student member concurs. Thank you, Mr. Prue.
Thank you.
Our next item under consideration is nominations for committee assignments for the Maryland Association of... the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. I have self-nominations here for the following budget committees. The Maye Budget Committee, Peter Bickford. The Legislative Committee, Stan Stauffer, with Melissa Williams as alternate. I have no one for conference program, no one for Federal Relations Network. For the nominating committee, I have Michael Gessford. Policies and Procedures, Melissa Williams. Resolutions Committee, Melissa Williams. Maye Awards Committee, Melissa Williams. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the self-nominations for Maye Committee assignments as presented by President Williams, and the sending of a board endorsement of those nominations to Maye.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any questions or discussion?
I think we should mention that Mr. Ryan now continues to be a member of the Maye Board of Directors. It's not reflected in that.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Okay, so the motion is to approve the self-nominations for Maye Committee assignments as presented. All those in favor? We're unanimous, and the student member concurs. And that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Williams. Tonight, I have three presentations and one video clip we'd like to share with the board this evening. Our first presentation's gonna be about our renovation center at Washington County Technical High School. Last year, as we started to talk about, how do we advance opportunities for our students, particularly in the areas of technology? We were kind of taking a look at our manufacturing academy, Project Lead the Way over at Technical High School. When I walk into the room, even though the equipment doesn't exist, I still see the old metal lathe lab that was there, machine shop lab that was there. The lathes, I think, at that time came from maybe Fairchild or someplace from back during the era of World War II. A lot of that equipment is gone, but the place still looks the same. So a lot of effort went into, from the maintenance department, I want to thank them, and from these two gentlemen and others, to shot glass floor, paint the walls, new lighting, and really excited about some new equipment that's gonna be coming. And we're gonna have students and staff back probably in a couple months to share some of the new opportunities that are available as a result of the equipment. But I did want Mr. Pine and Mr. Gaiman to just give you a brief update. This is one of several high-tech projects that we're working on, pretty excited about some things that we hope we're gonna have in the works and roll out for the 2020 school year. So we have some planning stages of some other large projects of this nature coming. So with that, I'll turn it over to the team.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Tonight, we're going to present to you the, what's in the works for the engineering program at Washington County Technical High School, including the space renovation and the equipment updates, and then the curricular updates. As you can see in the photos, the engineering space before still had the original 1972 look and feel. Take note, the varnish peeling on the floors and the locations on the walls where tools and machinery once hung.
See the light, I think you can see there, the old lights, you can see in this picture as well.
This summer, new light fixtures were mounted, walls were patched and repainted, new data drops were installed, the concrete floor was ground, dyed, and polished, and the classroom space was enlarged. This area that you see in the photos is now called the Innovation Center of our Engineering Academy at Tech High. It is being furnished with brand-new student workstations, storage, and high-tech equipment. The former equipment and space used in engineering was in need of an upgrade to align to current industry and post-secondary standards. This summer, new equipment, as shown in the photos, was purchased to enable students to learn those standards. Now, students will have increased opportunities, opportunities to put into practice their learning in a high-tech laboratory setting, where they will design and model solutions using computational thinking and logic. So, this for me is the most exciting part. The Technical High School and the Innovation Center, it's going to include a mechatronics industry 4.0 system, a MakerBot 3D printing cell, and a computer numeric control machining cell. When we have all that equipment in place, operational, the curriculum provided with that, that we will be one of the first high schools in the nation to have this kind of technology for our students. Mainly, this type of equipment and opportunity is only available at the post-secondary level and in high-tech industry. But we are still using the Project Lead the Way curriculum. The same classes will be available for completion for students, but we are adding industry, national industry certification for students to get their certified production technicians in mechatronics and robotics. And that is, that is a big step, because that certification only exists now in post-secondary So with that being said, we are also expanding opportunities. Right now, we have either transcripted and/or articulated credits that exist with the University of Maryland, Baltimore County, and Hagerstown Community College. We are looking to not only expand those opportunities at those two institutions, but offer opportunities at additional post-secondary institutions. And we are strengthening our business and industry partnerships by having them work with us through advisement, work with us through their knowledge and expertise in industry, and also working with, through post-secondary institutions, the professors, the presidents, things like that. Are there any questions for Mr. Gaiman and I on our update for the Innovation Center at Washington County Technical High School?
Mr. Stauffer?
How many students do we have in these various fields here?
We currently have 32 students enrolled, 16 in the junior level, 16 in the senior level.
But with this renovation, we are expanding opportunities for students. I can't guarantee what percentage as of yet, but we are moving the program bigger and forward.
Then I have another question, just out of curiosity. When I looked this over, when I got my packet, I was just intrigued by the fact that in the one picture, new tools of industry, there appears to be an electric guitar, electric bass on the one workstation. Is that why...
Well, what we're showing you, and we can go back, go back to that slide, what we are showing you there is the operation of the computer numeric control machine. So what our students are really gonna gain, they're learning coding through computer science, and coding exists also in computer numeric-controlled machines. It's an XYZ coordinate system, and students have to know how to code commands, to do loops and actions, and programming points to perform machining cycles. With the mechatronics and robotics, they have to learn how to use programmable logic control through coding to talk to the robot, so that the robot can perform the task that the student wants to do. The electric guitar, and you can see in the picture, is just something that the CNC machine can be programmed to do.
So the machine can actually cut that out, not necessarily as electric guitar, but the shape of it.
Right.
Could be coded and designed to cut that out. Cut it out of metal, different machine cut it out of wood.
And you could also see the, I'm sorry, the 3D printer at the bottom right side of that screen, if we can have that back up. You'll see an engine block.
Right.
Was printed there. Today, the new 3D printers are good enough to print also the components of that engine, so the student, if they wanted to, could assemble that engine to see if their design would meet the criteria that they had theorized.
And how long did it take to prove, to make that engine block? What's the, many hours?
I would assume it took a few hours, but I do not know the answer to that.
Any other questions? I'd like to dig a little deeper into Mr. Stauffer's question. You say you have 16 juniors and 16 seniors, 32, so that's capacity for these programs?
We could, we could certainly accept a few more in both the junior and the senior. Part of our marketing, so to speak, with our, with our 10th grade tours is going to be to really try to let them know about the additional offerings that we're going to be having in this program, and we really hope to be able to increase our numbers as a result.
As a result of that, and you said you were expanding opportunities, so my question, what I'm thinking is perhaps we need to go lower than 10th grade with letting our students know of these opportunities? Has thought been given to even middle school, you know?
Well, we currently want to inform all students of all opportunities that exist for them, so we will definitely be marketing what we have available as far as programming-wise to all students. We have already been working on doing some career exploration, development, exposure down in middle school. We're looking to push that even lower, possibly even to elementary schools, so students are vastly aware of all the opportunities that exist here in Washington County.
Mr. Pine, we have 3D printers in middle school.
We do, we do, and the intent is to, as technology, as we move forward, as you all know, technology becomes outdated almost instantly. So our overarching goal is to push technology down, lower into the grade levels, so that when students come up to a program like this, they're on such high-end equipment that doing something that may have been high-end two years ago is now in the elementary school.
I can only think that it would be motivating and an incentive for many students in the upper elementary grades and middle school to know that such programs exist for them at Tech High, should they do well, and be able to be the kinds of students that would be accepted into these kinds of programs. That's, that's my thinking, and I'm sure it's in alignment with yours.
I just wanted to mention, next Monday night at South Hagerstown High School, there's specialized program presentations going on for elementary, middle, and high. Tech High has six of our staff members that will be presenting. As you know, Tech High is a specialized program, and so we hope to be able to communicate with a lot of parents and families at the middle and elementary level.
Great, great.
I know we're very excited, and our excitement and enthusiasm and our staff members' excitement and enthusiasm spills to our kids. Our kids are super excited and enthusiastic, and that will build too, as they talk to their peers. So it will just grow systemically.
That's great.
So is that Tech High, the first week of school, and I just asked, happened to be the day the seniors were there. Remember, 16 students were in an A-Day, B-Day, so they're all day on one day or the other. So it's not a class of 16 for 45 minutes or something. These kids are there hours a day. And I just asked them what they thought of the new lab, and so far, we don't have a lot of new equipment, but they were really excited about, I mean, obviously really excited about what was coming. Also, their classroom doubled in size. They were in a very small room, about the size of the room over here with, you know, 20 computers and various things, so it's been a significant change, and we're excited about what's gonna come. Hopefully, maybe before the winter break or shortly after the new year, we'll bring students and the teacher back, maybe we can bring some samples of what they've produced at that point, or a couple of very short video clips of some things in action. I think the board's gonna be very impressed. These are great, great opportunities. I can remember at Tech High when we got the first 3D printer, the thing was like $35,000 or something. It printed some pretty crazy stuff back then, 10 years or so ago, and now we're buying the same thing for a couple thousand bucks, or maybe a thousand dollars. So I mean, this is just accelerating, it's moving from just plastics, it's printing other types of things, so. More to come. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second presentation tonight is an update for the board on our AP, IB results. Our students continue to do very well. Our teachers have worked extremely hard to help make our students successful. These are the students who are taking AP and IB. Also, remind the board, we have a substantial number of students that are in Essence Program, the equivalent of Essence Program at HCC. We have courses that are taught by our staff, HCC courses taught on campus, middle STEM, Middle College STEM program. So a lot of these other students were, you know, are starting to siphon off out of some of our AP programs, but we continue to do very well, so. Dr. Pugh, Marie?
President Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board, Dr. Pugh and I will be presenting student achievement data for Advanced Placement and International Baccalaureate tonight. The first graphic is for Advanced Placement to check the trends and performance. We had 2,002 exams taken, which is the red bar, that were taken by 1,204 students in the dark blue bar. The AP exam has five levels, and the top three, three, four, and five would be considered passing. Out of those, we had 1,066 students or exams with passing scores, so that would be 53.2% pass rate. We had 2,557 students enrolled in AP courses at the end of the year. For International Baccalaureate, we had 292 exams, again in red, taken by 104 students in the dark blue. For IB, the top four, four, five, six, and seven, it's out of seven, would be considered passing, so that would be 206 of the exams. That would be a 70.5% pass rate, and we had 588 students enrolled in IB courses at the end of the year. Out of our 1,261 students that participated in these two different types of exams, we had 1,157 that participated in AP only, which is the green. We had 57, which is the yellow, taking only AP exams, and we had 47 students who are participating in both AP and IB, which is the blue at the top. Looking at the score distribution of the 2,002 exams, you can see that 9.7% were at the highest level of five, 18.7 were at the next highest level, four. Rounded out for the passing exams, 24.8% got a three on that exam, or on those exams. For IB, again, that's out of seven, so 1% got the top score of seven, 7.2% got a score of six, 21.2% got a score of five, and then rounding off the passing, 40.8% of our students got a four.
So some notable accomplishments at our August Principal Council, Dr. Michael and Dr. Akers recognized several of our high schools, their AP administrators and teams for the accomplishments of the students and the teachers. For all-time high pass rates, the number of exams and the percent of exams based upon AP enrollment, as well as the highest percentage of passing scores. Dr. Reinhardt worked together with the school teams to also identify and provide training for AP and IB teachers, and with your support of our professional learning budget, these schools were able to achieve all-time highs, both in percentage of students taking the exams, percent of students passing, and the number of students taking an exam. We continue to ensure that our AP teachers have the full content training. It's recommended that they have the training every three to five years, and more often, if the assessment actually changes. We also, last year, established our first district AP council made up of all the AP teachers at the schools in the various subject areas, along with the administrator and administrative team. They were formed last year to make sure that our efforts were aligned and that we were learning from one another, that we also supported the professional learning communities. If you're the only AP chemistry teacher at the school, it's kind of a lonely job, no one else does exactly what you do, so it was a good, good to get them together, to share, both in their analysis of data and in where they had strengths, so that they can learn from one another. We also wanted to continue to promote those successful practices. They actually were here last night from 4:30 to 6:30, working on just that. They were reviewing their own local, national, and state data to look at the successes that we had in each of the school areas and to learn from one another. Actually, Williamsport High had some significant increases this year, and they shared their approach of using some... approach of using some school-wide advanced placement strategies in subjects beyond just AP, so that their students were prepared for the level of rigor when they did more advanced coursework. We're also participating again this year in the state's Lead Hire Initiative, with three schools are continuing to ensure that AP and IB enrollment actually reflects the diversity of the school population. Last year's work resulted in an increased enrollment of diverse students, and this year's work will focus on cultivating that sense of belonging in those classes and continuing to close enrollment gaps to ensure equity of access to advanced coursework. And at this time, if you have any questions about AP or IB, she knows the data and I know behind the scenes.
Mr. Stauffer?
I've seen articles where it said that colleges, fewer colleges are taking AP credits.
It depends on the discipline that you're in and the college, actually. We do, on our website, the Advanced Programs Place, have a, it's called Your Future Starts Now, and there's a link that you can follow that shows which colleges accept AP credits and what you have to score for those AP credits, and they vary widely. For example, if you're going into an engineering program, they may not accept your mathematics or science AP because they want you to take their program at their college. So, but we would say, and it was talked about last night, that the value in taking an AP course, yes, monetary for a score that exempts you out of a college-level course, but it's also in the skills, because the skills that you're learning when you're studying at that level of rigor and writing and responding and analysis help you when you're preparing for college-level courses.
Junior college, the program we have with them, and take the college course?
Well, I would say that our AP teachers are really highly trained, and that the rigor that they're achieving with our students is a high level. Not to take anything away from our community college, that's certainly a college-level course, but I also think that we have a lot more time with our students. When you're in a hundred and eighty days for an hour a day, that's a hundred and eighty hours of work in an advanced coursework, as opposed to a semester when you're there for ninety days. So we have that advantage, is additional time with our students, given their developmental level and their attention to the work that they're doing.
And one last question. Is the requirement that you get thirty hours of training every three to five years, is that relatively new?
Yes, that's the recommended level of AP itself. They went to, a few years back, if you remember, where you, each individual teacher had to submit their syllabus. So each teacher had to go to, many times it's a week-long training, where they actually go through the process of learning how to develop their syllabus based upon the standards in the course, and then, of course, they change or grow. So that week-long intensive study really helps the teachers understand that, the content deeply. We do try to monitor and try to encourage attendance at those trainings, just to make sure that our kids have access to the most highly-trained teachers who know the content deeply and well. There are some new things coming from College Board itself in terms of giving a scope and sequence and additional support for teachers, including assessments and question banks that will really help our teachers. So we do ask that they continue learning about it.
Because when we started teaching at Williamsport AP American History in the middle nineteen eighties, we were basically, another teacher and I were basically given a copy of the curriculum, no training, just what we knew from college, having been through all that. And, but when we did AP American Government and Politics, had to go to Goucher College in Baltimore and take weeks' worth of training back in the nineties.
Any other questions? Mr. Vicar?
What are the barriers that we might be able to help with to get more students to actually take the AP exams?
So we did also talk about that last night. It's less of a barrier if the entire group of students in your class start out with the intention that they're going to take this exam, that it's beneficial to them, and that everyone has the same goal. So they really encourage kids to sign up early and say, we intend to, we're taking this course, we're going to take the exam. I think Williamsport had ninety-two percent of their students in their courses actually take the exam, and it was that kind of mindset that really drove their success in saying, you're in an AP course, you're in that level, why not have the benefit of taking the exam? So I think the barriers, we try to reduce with cost. So students who receive free and reduced meals, we pay a hundred percent of their exam. For all other students, we pay fifty percent of their exam, which, when we looked at trends across the state, that was pretty generous. We didn't put strings on it to say you had to earn a certain score, or that you had a certain time period that you had to take it in. So I think starting off with the same goal was the message last night that the Williamsport teachers gave and shared and said, it really does make a difference when you're working as a team. Other barriers to actually getting students enrolled, that's the work that the equal-opportunity schools did, and really, they did a survey of students and teachers, and they asked the students, why haven't you taken? And often, it was just, nobody's ever asked. So it was really interesting for school teams to analyze their own data and really try to do just that, eliminate the barriers for access and eliminate barriers if there were perceived barriers about actually taking the exam.
Thanks.
When will individual school results be available that we can take a look at?
Yes, we have individual schools' data, and it's been provided to schools. We could get an update for you as well.
Just curious, more than anything. I think, too, I like some of the things that you've said, but I think, you know, when I saw that some of the numbers came down a little bit, that does not scare me. You know, if kids take in an AP class, they should want to take an AP class, because they're going to be more inclined to do the kind of work that needs to be done. Just stuffing somebody in there and saying, oh, you know, we think you should be taking an AP, a lot of times, that's just a recipe for somebody not putting their heart and soul into it. So, thank you for the information.
Okay, thanks very much. Our last formal report will be about in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension. I think we provide this information to the board every year. The state tracks this data very carefully across the state by district, and Dr. Palmer and Dr. Akers are going to give you a brief update.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board. Dr. Michael, this evening, we are presenting a report on discipline procedures, in-school suspension, and out-of-school suspension.
Washington County Public Schools uses a tiered system of awards and interventions to establish positive learning environments. Minor behavior issues are handled by teachers in the classroom. More serious or persistent behaviors, there we go, get the right slide up there. More serious or persistent behaviors are handled by administrators or teams of school personnel. A small percentage of students attend alternative school or specialized programs to continue their academic work while working to improve their behavior. All of these processes are most effective when we are able to work collaboratively with parents.
Teachers manage student behavior to promote learning in a number of different ways.
When student behaviors warrant administrator intervention, the administrators follow the Washington County Public Schools disciplinary guidelines. The guidelines provide a progressive series of consequences for specific offenses. The disciplinary guidelines begin on page twenty-three in the Washington County Public Schools Handbook and Guide, and that handbook is available on the Washington County Public Schools website.
Washington County Public Schools disciplinary guidelines give a range of different consequences, ranging from verbal warnings to alternative placements for some of our students.
This is an example of how the guidelines provide administrators with progressive parameters for assigning consequences. Administrators make disciplinary decisions based on the severity of the infraction, prior disciplinary incidents, and the age of the student.
One of the consequences for which we are required to collect and report data to the Maryland State Department of Education is in-school suspension. And this chart shows the number of different students that were assigned in school suspension, the percentage of students, and the number of incidents. All three indicators have declined over the last three years.
Another consequence for which we are required to collect and report data to the Maryland State Department of Education is out-of-school suspension. This chart shows the number of different students assigned out-of-school suspension, the percentage of students who were assigned out-of-school suspension, and the number of incidents for which out-of-school suspension was assigned. All three indicators show the number of suspensions has varied over the last three years, with a significant increase last year.
So in closing, to provide a safe culture for learning and teaching, WCPS teachers and administrators use a tiered system of behavioral supports and interventions. This system helps serve both the needs of individual students and the needs of the school community.
Welcome, any questions?
Mr. Stauffer?
Yes, I guess my first question would be, how are these different from last year's numbers? And what are we doing differently this year compared to what we did last year? Because we've had a lot of incidents in the schools in the bullying process, and I want to know what we're doing to change that process of bullying in the classrooms and the schools.
So you had a lot of what?
Bullying.
Oh, bullying. We have, and have had for some time, a pretty strong procedure that, when followed, is effective. So we train our administrators every year on how to follow that system for investigating and taking appropriate actions. One of the things we have done is strengthen our follow-up procedures, so that as part of that procedure, there's a mandatory two-week and four-week check-in that the administrator has with the victim of bullying harassment to make sure that it hasn't restarted again. So now we are actually sending a letter to the parent at the end of that process to say that, hey, we've checked in with your child at two weeks and four weeks, and he's reporting, or she's reporting, that the bullying is no longer occurring. Should it reoccur, or your child tells you it reoccurs, you're to contact the school. And if somebody unrelated to this incident, if something new starts, then we would ask that you complete a new bullying harassment form. So those are, you know, like I say, we do the annual training, but we've also added some additional follow-up to make sure that, you know, the bullying isn't continuing.
And the, I see that the number of the out-of-school suspensions has increased significantly. What can we contribute that to? I mean, that's three hundred-some more people in just in a year's time.
That number tends, we had a significant drop in the number of suspensions when the state changed the guidelines that we follow, and we've sort of reached sort of a plateau where it just kind of goes up and down. The vast majority of our suspensions are due to fighting, you know, fights that occur typically on the high school, middle school level. So when you see the number of suspensions, that's what accounts for the vast majority of those, and typically, both students involved in a fight are suspended. So where you see two susp, you know, two suspensions, in reality, it was one incident, but involved two people. So those numbers, which obviously we'd love it if none of our students ever did anything to get suspended, but those numbers, you know, that seem, you know, could seem high, when you realize that a lot of times, they come in twos, because the vast majority of those are the result of a fight that occurred.
Just standing corrected, I was meaning the incident numbers and not the students. So, because it is like three hundred more incidents, so I explained that to you. And the final question would be, what are we doing to protect our teachers in the classroom when we have students that become disruptive?
Well, disruptive, again, if it's disruptive behavior, meaning that they're interrupting the instruction, making it hard for other students to learn, you know, again, we do have, you know, the first level is the teacher with classroom management, and then they're able to send disruptive students to the administrators for more severe consequences, if that's appropriate. I think a growing concern isn't so much just disruptive behavior, but just completely unruly behavior, where, you know, it's extremely disrespectful, not recognizing the teacher's authority, that sort of thing. And that's, again, one of the reasons why some of these consequences do go up, why we have the alternative school, you know, to deal with those kinds of behaviors. And it can be tough to change student behavior. So some students, unfortunately, will go to the alternative school and stay there for, you know, sometimes years. But for the most part, we're able to get students, and the vast majority of our students never have any behavior issues. You're really talking about a pretty small percentage of our population. In fact, I just did a little calculation today, and one, it was about one point three, one point four percent of our students that end up in alternative school. So it's a pretty small number of students that have those more severe behavior issues.
Mrs. Murray?
Procedure for in-school suspension for elementary students.
So do you mean the procedure of each school?
Yeah.
Do they achieve in-school suspension?
Does each school, each elementary school, have their own in-school suspension system? Or, I know when I was at Salem Avenue, we had a room, we had a person that was in charge of in-school suspension, and other schools would send their students to our school for the day, or maybe two days. I just was wondering, is that program still in place, and how many elementary schools have that program?
So at the elementary level, we do follow the guidelines, which are set by the handbook, and we have two schools currently who have an in-school suspension or an in-school intervention for schools across the county to be able to utilize for a day or two, as you mentioned. Every school has the ability to have an in-school intervention space or an in-school suspension room, or space to be able to provide instruction for students outside of the classroom.
I have a question. In looking at the out-of-school suspensions chart, you have the number of different students and the number of incidents. That says to me that you have students who are involved in more than one incident that ends in out-of-school suspension. So is there a maximum number of out-of-school suspensions, and then does that then lead to a placement in the alternative school?
Well, for the most part, students have, can be suspended for a maximum of ten days. So at that point...
For one incident?
Oh, no, I mean total.
Total? Okay. So they can have multiple infractions and end up, just as long as they don't get suspended for more than ten days?
Right. Well, I mean, that doesn't mean that after ten days, they necessarily are sent to alternative school. It just means that that isn't an option, you know, for a consequence. But typically, it sort of depends on like the, how these events occur. So if a student is suspended in September and then is, has no behavior issues whatsoever, and then ends up getting suspended in March, that's different than a student who's suspended in September, and again in October, and again in November, you know? That's obviously not responding to the interventions, because it doesn't just end with suspension, you know? There's counseling, there's meetings with the student support team, meeting with parents, you know? So a lot goes on other than just suspension. But if those things aren't effective, you know, if I'm answering your question, that's when, you know, we start looking at alternative school or some other programming that might be effective for a student who's just persistently disruptive or, you know, interfering with the learning environment. environment.
Any other questions?
Last part of our report, if I can find Erin back there. Are we ready with our perfect attendance? It was my pleasure last week to get around the county, recognize 31 of our teachers that had perfect attendance last year. Fortunate, I guess, to have good health and certainly put a priority being in the classroom every day they possibly could be. To have perfect attendance as a teacher, you can't do sick days or personal days. So, this is quite an accomplishment. A number of these people had perfect attendance, maybe for six, seven consecutive years in a row, wherever their history of their career have had multiple years of perfect attendance. So, we just put together just a little slideshow, takes a couple of minutes here, just to recognize all those that had perfect attendance last Erin, for putting that together for us. It was a great celebration to be able to go around the county and to celebrate the accomplishments of our teachers being role model for our students. Really interesting, as I would leave the classroom, walk out in the hallway with the principal, almost to a person, without any prompting, the principal would say, "And they're an excellent teacher as well," many of which I already knew that they were. But I think it's just kind of an extra bonus to have excellent teachers in the classroom as often as they can. So, congratulations to them. That's all of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. We'll move on to personnel action. Dr. Bishop?
Good evening, Mrs. Williams, Dr. Michael, and board members. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of tonight's personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Is there a motion?
None.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenauer. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is to approve personnel actions as disclosed, as disclosed, as discussed earlier during closed session. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to reports to the board. We'll start with facilities for committee reports. Mr. Kessler?
Thank you. We recently met on the 11th of September. The report will be ready for you at the next meeting.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Bickford?
No reports since our last meeting.
Human Resources, Mr. Reidenauer?
Human Resources, we're not meeting this month. We'll look and see if we need to schedule a meeting next month.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher, policy review and development?
Policy Committee actually met earlier this afternoon, beginning with a review of the policy on sunscreen use, which was passed on second read earlier this evening. We then began a discussion on several policies that are related to visitors to schools, to the use of facilities, and access to schools and other board of ed property. Included in that also were surveillance cameras. We felt that these policies were closely related, had a lengthy discussion about combining those, which looks like that's what we're going to try and do. So, we're going to put, there's a set of two and a set of three together. And our next policy committee meeting is scheduled for October, I don't know the date, that 4th Tuesday, whatever that is in October.
23rd, I think it is.
23rd, thank you, at our usual time of 9:15.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mrs. Murray, curriculum and instruction?
Curriculum and instruction will meet Tuesday, September 25th, at 10:30 in the morning in the board conference room.
Thank you. Mr. Mackley, anything for us?
The Washington County Association of Student Councils will have our first general assembly meeting next Tuesday, September 25th, at Williamsport High School.
Okay, we'll move on to our second item under reports to the board, and that will be Mrs. Murray's report as liaison to the Washington County Public Schools Education Foundation. Mrs. Murray?
Washington County Public Schools Education Foundation met last Wednesday, September 12th, and so I will report on some of the things that we talked about. Christina Williams, our education foundation executive director, was at an ice cream social on 9/7 here at the CES to kick off the Washington County Public Schools Employee Giving Campaign. The foundation is excited to announce that Dr. and Mrs. Mitesh and Erin Kathary will generously match $10,000 from Washington County Public Schools employee donations. We use the employee donations to enhance the classroom. We invest in teachers and students through our programs. In the coming days, we will also be announcing that the Washington County Public Schools Education Foundation Board of Directors is fundraising to match another $10,000. Under innovative grants, Christina has started visiting WCPS classrooms to see the 2018 innovative grant recipients in action. We funded 18 grants, totaling $15,130.47. And today, I went with her, and we visited Rayanne Coulter at Pangorn Elementary, who used her grant money to make a Chill Zone sensory room, and it was very awesome. The kids just loved it, or they do love it. Under GLOW Financial Literacy, they have, with avid teachers, grades nine through 12 at North Smithsburg, South and Williamsport, they are implementing GLOW Financial Literacy and College Preparedness curriculum for the 2018-19 school year, and they have set up a volunteer under Sign Up Genius to utilize and train 10 new volunteers. They have 204 volunteer slots, which would require approximately 42 mentors. They have a FAFSA frenzy, and they were proud to be part of the article Funding and Education in At Home Places, Autumn 2018 Edition. This article presented information about applying for financial aid, the free application for student aid, and general information about paying for college. They have different workshops, they call FAFSA frenzies, and they help students fill out the FAFSA form for college. And then, the last, two more things, sorry. They have a new program through the guidance of Dr. Michael regarding literacy initiatives. The WCPS Education Foundation is piloting a super readers program as an initiative, initiative, excuse me, to improve elementary literacy. We have 25 volunteers signed up to attend training. Laura Barnes and Eric Meredith, both WCPS Education Foundation Board members, have volunteered their schools for this pilot program. Laura Hanks, WCPS Supervisor for English Language Arts and Social Studies, has been instrumental in helping with materials, and we are very excited about this program. And the last thing I want to report is, under Environmental Science Literacy Program, the WCPS Education Foundation Board of Directors voted to enter into a partnership with several WCPS staff members, Dr. Williamson, Tara Ellis, and Courtney Leir, to apply for and anticipate to receive a grant from the Fletcher Foundation for use in an environmental science literacy program. We are excited to assist in providing professional development for Washington County Public Schools teachers. And that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Okay, our next item on the agenda, under miscellaneous business, future agenda items. You have a list of future agenda items, which is provided to you in your packet. I took a little criticism for the length of my future agenda items at our last meeting, so I'm only going to mention those items that are on the agenda for our October meetings. We have on October 2nd, a master plan update, a new teacher update, and the presentation of two financial audits, the single audit and the 2018 financial audit. And then, on the 16th of October, we have a report on the computational learning plan and counseling update, school counseling update. So, we're in agreement that we want to move forward with those topics for those meetings. All right, thank you. So, that brings us to board member comments. Mr. Mackley, would you like to start down there for this evening?
I have nothing.
Okay. Mrs. Murray?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Just wanted to thank the editors of the Herald Mail. I'm sure it was quite a boost for staff to come in and read praise in the newspaper, applause, motivation on the park scores, as we were presented with last time. Our students did remarkably better in park scores this year, and the Herald Mail described it, "Not just a step, but a leap." So, just thanks to them. Nice to get some positive breaths.
Dr. Kessler?
Another thing.
Another thing? Mrs. Fisher?
I have nothing.
Mr. Reidenauer?
And I have nothing. Would you like the final word, Dr. Michael?
It's off to a good school year, and I hope it continues.
Okay, we're adjourned.